We, we are live on the air whenever y'all are ready.
Are you ready, Dr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Greenwood LaFlore Consolidated School District Board of Trustees Work Session Friday, May twenty second, twenty twenty. Uh, board member Antoine Williams said he would be joining the work session late. We've already had, um, a moment of silent prayer, Dr. Brown.
Alright, so we will start with the first thing on our agenda, our data reports. Will include the I Ready usage report from the sixteenth through May fourteenth. Um, followed by third nine week comprehensive data. Dr. Pullman and Ms. Coleman will begin.
Oh, yes. What, what you're, um, looking at is basically the numbers of students, uh, the number of logins, uh, per school. For that entire time period that we had to extend the closure. Uh, and what, what was promising for us is that we did recognize each day that we had, um, a great many of our students. Uh, who were logging on to our, um, online program in order to, uh, um, to, to enhance their instructional, uh, uh, the, the opportunities while they were absent, uh, from, from physically being in school. So, we recognize, uh, that these numbers definitely, uh, show great promise that our students were still engaged. Uh, in E L A and math, uh, through I Ready while they were out. Ms. Coleman?
Um, all I have to add to that is, uh, like Doc said, as the weeks progressed, students increasingly, uh, participated, uh, in the online activities. With I Ready, another computer-based program. Because we began and we worked privately, it started off slow. But we're optimistic that we have great momentum going into the summer and the fall of next year, that these numbers will continue to increase growth.
Next, in your perspective, you have the third nine week comprehensive data.
Okay, what you're seeing here by school, um, is the overall proficiency, uh, on the third, on, on, on that, uh, comprehensive assessment that students took prior to exiting school, uh, before spring break. Uh, as a whole, uh, we had, uh, five schools were on track in March to reaching growth expectations in E L A. And that's where you see the, uh, growth percentage, uh, you're either gonna see a negative sign or a positive sign. Uh, and these signs just basically indicate, uh, whether or not a school in this particular area were likely to increase or likely to decrease, uh, uh, in growth expectations. So, five schools were on track to reaching growth expectations in E L A, and eight schools were on track to reaching growth in mathematics. Now, all year long, we have recognized in our data that our math performance, uh, had always, on each assessment that we, uh, that we, uh, administer. All, um, our math data always, uh, either met or exceeded, um, the, the expectation. We recognize that we had, uh, more work to do in E L A, uh, but we are definitely using this data now to know, hey, we have to take our students one by one, look at where they are, and even though we did not test this year, but we recognize that at some point that, um, assessments will, uh, begin again. And so, our, uh, staff has been working with teachers with our data, um, to, to, to really narrow down, hey, what is that our kids missed on this comprehensive assessment, uh, that we need to, uh, definitely go back to the drawing board and see how do we need to adjust, adjust our instructional practices, so that whenever we begin, uh, um, school for the fall, whether that's through distance learning, whether that's through, uh, other creative scheduling, so we can make sure that we keep all of our students first as it relates to data. No matter what the numbers are, there are students behind each of, each of our numbers. And so, we wanna make sure that we recognize in E L A that we have more work to do, but we also, um, see the, the great promise in it, uh, in the five, in those five schools who reached those particular growth expectations in E L A. Um, uh, and, and just as a whole, we do, um, math. We recognize that math, uh, would have, uh, taken, taken us, uh, it would have kept the carrier, kept the comprehensive assessment being, um, the real end of your assessment. Uh, and, and also, I would like to add, this was, this test was taken in March. And so, what we would have done, had we remained in school, we would have utilized this data, uh, to share with teachers, parents, and students, so that we could have, uh, um, worked that last month and a half before the end of assessment, hopefully, uh, um, um, to, to put in that extra work to get our students where they needed to be. But, but at this point, we're using our data so that we can begin in the fall, well, no, I'm, I'm stopped. So that we can begin in the summer to work with professional development opportunities for our teachers, uh, so that we'll know exactly how to begin in the fall with our students. Dr. Brown?
And just to add to, or just to echo what Dr. Pullman was saying, E L A has always, uh, been issuing that's, that's, um, statewide, that's, that's everywhere. And what he was saying also is that although they, we did have five schools on track to meet the targets, we would have used that, that, we've always used that last nine weeks to give teachers the opportunity to, uh, review and reteach skills with students. But we're, we're looking at that data, the, um, chiefs are meeting with teachers right now, will continue to do that throughout the summer. Okay, next we have-
So, I wanna ask one question. So, how much of that, uh, did, um, our consulting group work with?
So, the, the consultants, basically, they worked with the, uh, in the lower grades, we had, uh, systems in the, um, E L A, you know, math and science areas, and not as much as we had in the past, because we do have our chiefs. And at the high school, the, high school level, they work in our study area.
I have a question. Yes, ma'am. Okay, based on your, your chief of school, um, right now, we have more teachers who are highly qualified to be put into those E L A programs. So, based upon who we have now, and looking at what the, the guidance is for, um, the CDC guidance that came out, as well as, um, social distancing and, and some of the things that may require distance learning, um, this is actually where we are right now, Ms. Lewis. We're looking at our, uh, people and, um, continue to work on the plan of as to how we're going to adjust social distancing to make sure that we have individuals who are, whether they're teaching online or in-class instruction to support the, our students. We, um, as of now, with the, the point of course we have, I would say, we, we do have, we have the individuals. We need, however, is just being more strategic in how we place them this year. Thank you. Yep. Next, we have our office, our calendar, traditional lunch count for our, our student program. Ms. Johnson?
Okay, what you have before you is the weekly meal summary. You will see, starting with Monday, May the fourth. You had a total number of one thousand three hundred, three hundred and ninety meals served at all locations. On Monday, May the sixth, you had a total of one thousand four hundred and thirty-five meals served. On Monday, May the eleventh, you had a total of one thousand two hundred and sixty-five meals served. And on Wednesday, May the thirteenth, you had a total of one thousand three hundred and thirty-five meals served. And I think the only page you probably don't have is Monday, May the eighteenth, we had a total of one thousand three hundred and twenty meals served.
Uh, Dr. Brown, just to know, to the staff, to your staff, uh, you know, for the type of pandemic stepping up to the plate to make sure our students are taken care of, Dr. Johnson, come in.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next, we have roofing projects to be completed based on the schedule from the twenty fifteen Greenwood Public School District M D E audit. Ms. Johnson?
Okay, what you have before you was the prioritized roofing plan that was completed by the Greenwood Public School that was back from the two thousand and fifteen audit for compliance purposes. This was the plan that was put together to take care of those roofing issues. And for the most part, they was on schedule. I think they had a couple of changes. If you would notice, number eight, Davis, that was one that was scheduled for this year, but they did that in the year of two thousand eighteen, nineteen, which, if you notice, number five, Bankston Wing B, that one was postponed, those two switched places. So, the last two that, that we have to complete this year would be that Bankston Wing B and Bankston Wing B. And that would complete, that would complete the roofing requirement based off that audit. And what you have on the back, backside of that is the proposal from Beard and Rogers to conduct those roofing project search. They will actually do the bidding of the roofers, the con- contractors for those projects for this upcoming school year.
Dr. Brown, uh, just to clarify, uh, this was submitted back in twenty fifteen, correct?
Yes, this is twenty fifteen.
And the consolidated school district files will be used to cover this?
Yes.
Next, you have in your package update from our chief and specialist, if you have any questions for me, then it's, um, because they're not aware, but I definitely get that with you if there are any that I cannot agree.
Dr. Brown, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, that's in relation to athletic, do we have any definitive information in regards to, um, whatever they're gonna do for the athletes?
As far as the, uh, season or the trophies and whatever, okay.
I know we are gonna take a back look, but what is that gonna look like and, um, when is it gonna happen?
So, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Davis will have been working on that, they have ordered, uh, um, um, trophies. They've, they've ordered, um, some of the, the things that they were wanting to be prepared to receive at the time of the day. I think it's pushing now until, until they actually get back with the students, let's go.
Yes, yes, some of it was delayed, some of it was delayed to, uh, come in. So, as soon as he get everything in, then we actually have a date to set.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Brown, as, as you relate to, uh, the report from the C D S update. I do recognize that, Dr. Brown, uh, the Michael's parents, because this, I don't know if it's, he is virtually or not, um, he's tired of, he doesn't bring it. So, what about students that are coming in early, or, or secure time, they not, they not my students?
So, yes, we, we're gonna offer something for all of our kids, that's actually coming down in the report. But this, that just address those precincts, but we do have something available to offer for all students in the district.
And do you have a timeline as we, we get that out, so parents can know what the process is to sign up, or just the options that they have?
Well, we're trying to have everything, uh, ready by next week. It's just we want to, to bring it to you all first, and then, um, make sure that everything we have is ready and prepared before we send something out. We want, we wanna be as accurate and, um, as clear as we can be.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
So, Dr. Brown, on this, um, the primary mental update, what is the check and balance issue? Like, how do we know, like, what they're saying that is being done in this, uh, like, who are they collaborating these things with? I'm saying, like, who, um, like, if they, if, I'm just gonna use maintenance, because it's one I'm looking at. And they said that, um, they're working on this field, and how do we know what they, or, or was the job completed?
Okay, so maintenance, um, I won't even say, once we, Mr. Johnson is, is, they're following up with Mr. Johnson basically every day. We have also gone, I know Ms. Coleman and I, um, have also, uh, Dr. Pullman gone around to, um, the, I know the kids damn, um, to the LaFlore campuses just to, to view what is or has taken place. But Mr. Johnson, each person who falls up under one of the other superintendents, they report to those superintendents.
Uh, Dr. Brown, um, in regards to the, the maintenance piece, um, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that there's no hot water at either the LaFlore Elementary or LaFlore County High. Um, so, just in the case that we do return to school in the fall, I'm not saying hot water has to be everywhere, but I think that's something we need to consider. Um, also, there may be buildings where the roofs are leaking over this way as well.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, can you address the hot water? And I'm, I'm making notes of the, the leaks and the hot water, Dr. Brown.
And for the record, Mr. Johnson, I understand you have limited staff. I do get it.
And, and, and to say hot water, if, if, if we're talking about hot water in, in students' restroom, that, that's across the district. There is no hot water in restrooms. Now, for as cafeteria and places like that, they, they, they do have hot water. Now, for as the faculty lounge, I verify whether or not hot water is provided there. But those are for safety reasons why hot water is not provided in student restrooms.
Can we get Luke Warren?
Now, I, I would check on the guidance on there, and I can get back with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Is that one of those C D C requirements?
What, talking about hot, what, hot water?
Yes.
No, uh, as long as it's soap and water. Soap, as long as you have the proper soap, all you need is water. It doesn't matter the temperature.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in regards to transportation, and I know this may be a little bit premature, but, I mean, time, it, it's August is coming. As it relates to the buses, how have you all began, and I'm sure you have, the plan, how you're gonna transport students? We're already, I think, short some buses, maybe short some bus drivers, and now you're not gonna be able to, to fill those buses to capacity. So, what, what's the plan on that?
And, uh, Ms. Lewis, that's where we, we talk about the, where distance learning would definitely have to be a part of what we're doing. Because I, I think, um, I'm not looking at our turn to the, the guidelines from the C D C, when, as it, they pertain to buses, uh, one student per seat, and you, you still have to, to, uh, it's one student per seat on a bus, and I think it's still six feet apart on the bus. So, that, and, and coupled with the fact that we don't have, um, enough buses to transport the kids properly. So, we, we're, we, there are some things that we, we plan to ask the board about. We still waiting on M D E to give us guidance regarding, um, how, uh, we can, can effectively do that. But I think for us, we're looking at the way we schedule our school days for our students to make sure that, and, and, and the, it's a priority for all students, but we definitely wanna make sure our younger students are at school as many days as they can be, um, a- and, and continue to stay in compliance with the social distancing. But that this platform, this, this campus platform that Dr. Pullman wants to talk about later is going to help us to, um, ensure that all of our kids are still receiving some type of instruction. So, as for the buses, I mean, we, we're still trying to figure out what that schedule looks like. And it may, uh, Mr. Johnson and I talked about, I mean, it may even include, and we hope not, but even some grade reconfigurations at school, so that if, uh, particular, uh, school is out or particular grade band is, is, um, at home, um, participating in distance learning, we're able to transport as many kids to school during that day. But we're still waiting for, uh, M D E to, uh, send us some guidance on that. I think, yeah, as of yesterday, they did have, uh, a board meeting, and they talked about the digital learning plan, um, that the districts ought to put in place. Um, so, right now, it's, it's, there's a lot of uncertainty around it, but we're definitely, um, doing our best to just think about what we can do, um, for our district until we get more guidance. So, we, we are planning, but right now, I'm gonna be honest with you, there's just so much uncertainty about it, because we don't have the, the buses, uh, to transport our kids the, the way we need them to, uh, without, and, and that will, the way that the guidelines are set up, it will require so many trips to pick up, um, all of our kids. By the time they get here, it wouldn't even be a set time for class to begin. So, it, it'll basically be if we had to bus them all in at one time, um, class is starting at different times of the day. So, we, we are looking at it and, and, um, welcome any ideas, because we do need them. But once M D E gives us more guidance, we'll continue to plan regardless. And when that we get the, uh, more guidance and information from M D E, as we plan, we'll tweak our plans. One thing I will say is, on next Friday, uh, myself and some of the Delta area superintendents are meeting. And we're continuing to, we're, we're just brainstorming and sharing ideas as to how we can do this together.
Okay, Dr. Brown, you all, I mean, parents also, you know, might feel a little better probably dropping their own children off. I know we can't say that that's something they have to, but some of them are gonna do that anyway.
Yes.
So, that might be a little relief.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, it is some, it'll be something that will have to be explored.
Yes, ma'am.
And Dr. Brown, I just wanna add that me and Ms. Hudson have been talking in depth about some of the things that we will try to start looking at. One of the things I think a company, Waters, has offered to, to look at some buses, to do some possible reconfigurations just to test it out. It wouldn't be no cost to the district at this time. And one of the things that they're looking at is, is doing the plexiglass between the seats to try to eliminate having to skip a row, so that would kinda give us more space on the bus. Because right now, it's one person per seat, and then you skip a row. So, so we are looking at that, because as it's standing right now, we would only be able to transport about twelve students on one bus. So, that, that, that will present problems for as the transportation side, for as the increase in the gas that will be spent, as well as the drivers being on the road, and as well as the time for them making it to the school buildings. So, we are looking at it, Ms. Lewis, and, and we're just trying to work out some things prior to August.
Dr. Brown, uh, under the security department update, um, number one, I just wanna say thank you, uh, and kudos to the security department. Uh, as you ride on campus, you can, uh, there's a noticeable difference, so we certainly appreciate that. Um, also, and this may be something maintenance related, um, but I know that many of the schools within the Greenwood area, they have, um, a mad lot of intercom systems to enter and exit the building. Um, is it possible that all of our, um, buildings, um, especially ones where students are housed it, can be outfitted with those devices for security purposes?
Yeah, and I-
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson, leave it.
Oh, w- we did talk to, uh, Ms. Washington and, and the budget planners about that. Uh, actually, that was on yesterday, to add that in the budget to be done for this upcoming school year. So, in June, we will probably be putting out a bid for that to happen, so it can start early July. They can start doing those for those schools that don't have that system.
Thank you all so kind.
Uh, Dr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
What about, have the teachers started to check out yet?
Yes, ma'am, they have. They, um, um, LaFlore Elementary, I, I know this, because I, I was over there the other day. They're, they're all, eh, all the schools are, are doing the checkout process right now. But they're being, the teachers are being scheduled to come in to, um, check out with the principals.
Okay, I was just making sure, but they are here for the social distancing and, um, making sure, uh, that no one, you know, I'm just saying that there's not a lot of people in the building at the same time.
Yeah. Now, when I went in the buildings, I did see social distancing. I, I could, um, I wanna believe that they, they are when we're not in the, they didn't know we were coming anyway. But I wanna believe that they, they, they do it anyway, but yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we hadn't had any problems yet, I'm saying, so far with someone in our district or anybody bumping into someone with the coronavirus?
To my knowledge, we, we hadn't, um, now, to my knowledge, we hadn't had been reported to me.
Okay. Alright.
Okay. Okay. Um, next, we have a donation from Mississippi Valley State University's Upward Bound Program. Mr. Johnson?
Uh, you, you will, you will actually see, and that will be on the board, Doc. We're actually waiting to receive the actual check from the program, that they will be donating. I wanna say there was seven hundred and sixty-five dollars to pay the cost of fifty-one students, uh, Chromebook fees. And you will see that list of students on the attachment that's listed there.
And this is for summer?
Well, this will, this will be for the upcoming school year, but that, that would allow those students to continue to have their Chromebooks over the summer.
Okay, so, next we have, um, summer training for teachers, Ms. Coleman?
Yes, ma'am. For the summer and fall, we will be utilizing, and continuing to utilize Google Classroom, and in some instances, Zoom, and we will be rolling out Canvas for teachers and students. So, uh, all of our school improvement, summer workers and, uh, E S Y teachers that were previously approved will be the teacher quality this, uh, program for the summer. Uh, we have our M T S S and P B I S specialists that will be working with teachers to target students with social and emotional issues, so that we can provide parents with strategies to address their specific needs. Today, um, at three o'clock, uh, teachers will be working to address how we will, um, account for student attendance, uh, during the virtual learning during the summer, teacher attendance, how we will hold students accountable, uh, how we will assess, uh, performance-based activities, and how we will do those things in the virtual learning environment. We're also looking to add video and web lessons in addition to using our instructional packets and computer-based programs. In addition to those things, uh, and we were looking for opportunities for all students in the district. We will be providing some gifted learning activities for all students, will be available to all students in the district. Will be, uh, placing that on our website, um, and Facebook pages for students to do gifted activities and things, encouraging them to work with their hand. Um, um, we will be working specifically with students enrolled in the summer program. We will be working specifically with students enrolled in the summer program, but we will have certain activities available to all students. Dr. Brown.
Okay, uh I apologize, I skipped the steering committee update. And uh school board, which will include board um school visits, which is optional, uh Mr. Johnson.
Uh the steering committee updates, we had our steering committee with our six uh committees this week. That consisted of them uh meeting with Gary Ba- Bailey from the Bailey Group. And he kinda went over just some possible different options for us, looking at elementary, the addition to the middle school. And variations of possible high school, I think that was the information that y'all received. And they kinda went through and just gave ideas and kinda asked different questions, and it was a pretty good meeting. Based from that meeting, he would develop some surveys that we'll be, that we will be putting out to the general public. We should be putting those out probably either next week or the first of June. We we looking at the different avenues of getting the information out, not only to our parents and our. Students and our faculty, but to all our community stakeholders, so that was one of the things we focused on. This past meeting is just making sure that we can get the information out to the community as a whole. And and with this said, I I would actually like to know if y'all would be interested in doing those school tours. I know you weren't able to do it during the school year, but in the month of June, if if there's something that y'all wanna consider. We will provide bus transportation and we can do it over a three-day period. I know we have a large amount of schools, we possibly could do approximately four schools a day, if there's something that y'all. Would like to do. Joan will be good for me.
It's good for me too, uh Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
Well, thanks guys, because I I think we certainly need. At least I would like to, so just give me an idea of uh whatever date or time, and I'll try to adjust my feelings.
Well, well, if y'all would just give me three consecutive dates and I, Ms. Milton, if there's something that. If once y'all give me the three and we'll work around y'all's schedule, whatever three days y'all choose in June, we'll make it work.
All right, that's fine, Mr. Johnson. So would you like us to add those dates back, the board meeting?
Yes.
So next we have the summer training on the learning management system, Dr. Pullman.
Uh yeah, we have been working over the past uh uh few days and weeks to identify. Uh a learning management system that we believe could help us uh better manage online learning for our district. Uh it it's a difficult time, but we know that um we have to have a uh. Have one place where our teachers, students, and parents uh um will have to go so that um. They can understand better uh what the district is putting out. They'll have a place where um communication is is has is improved and then learning continues. In a very high-class way. So we've we've identified the program Canvas. Um and with with this particular program, uh but on the but learning management system. Um it'll, it will provide the district with the online platform for all grades. Uh where teachers will um be held accountable for his or her own class. Uh if your teachers the opportunity and ability to create uh and upload their own classroom assignments and activities. Um you know, since we help them out, we utilize iReddy. Um but of course, we are li- we we've been limited uh in certain um aspects of of that. Uh for example, uh many of our elective courses, we may not have had the opportunity to actually manage those. Physical courses over the uh online environment. Also, uh Canvas offers enhanced features such as uh interactive video. Uh interactive videos, so that we can continue to uh engage our students. And to encourage student engagement, even if uh we're not physically with them. Uh uh we also have the ability to uh improvise and assessment bank, also with data analysis tools. So we're looking at this learning management system as uh uh as our one uh system where we can. We can uh manage and facilitate all aspects of what we're doing in the academic program. Uh as far as the training, uh we recognize, I had a, my conversation with the representative. Uh I shared with him that uh due to our current situation, we recognize that won't be able to. Uh he won't be able to physically train all of our students, so we're gonna, we're gonna go with the train the trainer model. Where we are uh, the representative will train about twenty employees, but twenty instructional staff members. And then those twenty staff members will be responsible for holding um virtual meetings with the rest of our staff. To get everybody acclimated to the owner, the online learning system. So everything that we're doing, we have to definitely learn more about it. Um and we'll be seeking uh uh input from our teachers. As to how this uh uh utilizing also for summer learning, I think it was mentioned earlier. What we're going to try to do uh with those twenty staff members uh is to begin utilizing uh Canvas. For our summer learning, so that any of the keys that we may see uh in the program or in the management system. We can identify, you know, any weakness or any issues we may be having, so that we can address those prior to. All of our students coming back into the class. So we're hoping to get that started uh uh during our summer learning opportunities for our students. And I will say those summer learning opportunities uh will be available for all students. Uh uh the, we 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 will continue to have iReddy available uh for our students, we're gonna upload packets. We're gonna continue to do that, so we do recognize that some students may not have, if they may have some laptop or the Chromebook, but. They may live in an area that is just very limited with uh internet connectivity. So we are gonna provide uh the, that same bridge, uh instructional delivery method that we have provided since we have them house. So that we can uh address it uh all students. Also, um with our summer learnings, the governor through his executive order. Uh we're gonna make sure that we are providing uh food, learning, our uh um instructional packet. The uh enrichment opportunities for our students. Also, we're gonna be uploading um um reading passages, so that our students uh. We we've had, we put a big push on independent reading this year, so that students can continue to grow and develop stamina. Uh as it relates to reading. So we're gonna be posting, I had a conversation with our uh chief of elementary education. So we're gonna be posting uh uh reading materials for our students for the summer, Dr. Brown. Oh, I missed, I missed something, I missed something, um. Um after our, after we acquire our learning management system, we have also identified ten. Uh courses at the high school level, um including A C T prep. And including um foreign language, and then the rest of it will include uh a math or science, English. You know, but it's ten courses overall, uh that we will provide across the district for uh all high school students. So for example, if a course is, if a teacher is not available, the teacher has a course in one high school. Then we'll utilize a teacher from another high school to provide that distance learning um for those students. But they're also, but but they will have uh access to be able to take those classes. So in a nutshell, all high school students will be able to have access to the same course.
May I ask a question?
Yes ma'am.
So Dr. Pullman, have you all thrown around the idea of maybe. Creating a playbook for the high school courses? So that in the event if, you know, we have to go home, um kind of outbreak. It's already kind of written down and the kids have a general idea of where they are and what the positions are.
Yes ma'am, uh as Dr. Brown, uh we're currently working on a different, a a a distance learning plan. And that's gonna be uh definitely included. One thing that has been uh uh different, of course, each high school. Probably has uh operated with three different math schedules over the, you know, several years. But as we uh work with distance learning, we recognize that those schedules are going to have to be uh quite similar, so that all students. Uh so that there won't be a time conflict, you know, you know, things like that. Uh but definitely, we're gonna, as soon as we uh acquire the program, train our teachers. We're gonna most definitely inform our parents and students uh and even given directions on how to proceed with the approach. Uh one good thing about Canvas also that uh is that we all have access to uh apps, three different apps. Uh it'll be uh Canvas student, Canvas parent, and Canvas teacher. So that it increases the communication among all of our staff and teachers. You know, many times uh parents definitely wanna talk with the teacher to just find out, you know, what is uh, what's my child's progress. But since we've been out, uh that communication has probably been a little limited. And so uh this uh uh learning management system definitely works to increase that communication. Uh but as you said, we're definitely, we're working on our distance learning plan to create similar schedules. And so that it won't be uh such a conflict and such a hassle for our, for students across the different high schools.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Question, Madam President, uh Dr. Brown and Dr. Pullman, uh awesome job, uh kudos, and it's much appreciated your efforts. Um now, I know that we're going, talked about possibly going to a new uh type of platform such as Canvas or Blackboard. Um do, uh would we have the bandwidth as it relates to the students uh with their uh hotspots at home? Uh for them to utilize it, and since I thought about bandwidth, I noticed we didn't have a report from technology. Under our cheat section, unless it was just something that I overlooked.
So in addition to our mobile hotspot, I believe that's something the state superintendent is is working on. Especially for those areas who uh where connectivity is limited. So we we do have our mobile hotspot, but with the phones that are coming in from the cares, and that's something that. Uh M D E is working on to make sure that um the areas that we're in have that information. But I'll go back and check um the uh report from technology.
Thank you all.
Okay. So now we came up to uh things that we're keeping in mind and have to consider as we plan for. Not just the summer, but the upcoming school year. And I'll start with the CDC guideline that that you have in your document. And just speak to some of those things that we know will have to happen uh next year and and. Um which will help us to solicit ideas from individuals on how we can let this work. And we'll say that we have also been looking at um some of the other states who um have completed planning. Or uh working on plans to guide us, um and two states were suggested. Uh on the call I I was listening to the other day, Missouri and Kentucky. And so we're looking at that as we create our district learning plan, as well as how we want to uh. Plan for the twenty twenty one school year. So the first thing we do know is that there will be a requirement for math. To uh our students, our, well, everybody will be required to uh wear masks um during the upcoming year. Um and for those uh students who don't have, you know, we will have those available, but those who who do. We we definitely encourage them to to wear their their face masks, as well as those individuals who are entering the building. Um now, if they're visitors to the buildings, so that as parents, we're asking that they wear some type of facial covering. Uh if they don't have a mask. We know that we are not able to, our students won't be able to share any items or supplies. And so um we're going to be speaking with the teachers, you know, after we get some uh. Our draft completed about containers and how we can do this so that we should know students are sure. Vipers or any other type of equipment. Uh we do know that the CDC has um, one of the guidelines is that our desks have to be six feet apart. But they also have to be facing the sunny weather, and so we're taking this into consideration. Mr. Johnson also talked about the the school buses, one child per seat skipping rows. And we're trying to find ways to um, like he said, to possibly do the partitions or the plexiglass on the bus to. At least get um an additional student on the bus if if the health department or other officials say that that won't work. Then we would just have to follow the guidance of those individuals. Um we know that we're we're going to have to um, even in the the hallways, monitoring the hallways. And and placing, uh we're not only placing posters with instructions, but um. Uh tape or to show individuals what direction they should be walking um in the hallway, but also to ensure the spacing. And a lot of the equipment that we will need, I'm sure that the, some of the funds in the care. And we'll take care of those, so that that will, so we won't uh have to rely so much on the district's funds. Um cafeteria, the CDC uh is advising that only. One of the the advisements, only prepackaged boxes or bags of food instead of cafeteria food. And kids eating in classrooms. So we also talked about what that would look like and um. Ordering the the mobile warming station, so that our our students will be able to be. Uh receive their lunch, breakfast and lunch in their classrooms. Uh no field trip is another, uh no field trip, no assemblies where a large amount of students are able to to gather together. Uh they also ask that the same children stay with staff all day, no switching group or teacher. So these are things that we we are also taking into consideration as we plan. Staggering the arrival and departure times for students to um limit exposure. And and that just go ties back into how we're gonna bus our kids to school, uh what days, uh. And 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 basically, we have to find a process for that, a system that will work well, um that will best fit this district. Now, if if possible, they said daily health and temperature checks. Now, on the the call that. Was the Zoom meeting uh with M S B A, some of the the things that they stated as it pertained to uh taking temperatures. And information um related to those individuals who may um have contracted the virus. We still have to uh keep that information confidential. And so in that, uh Ms. Lewis, when you talked about that plan for parents and students, we're with, in that document. We're gonna have a plan for every aspect of how uh the requirements that we're going to uh. Present to everyone regarding this information. Um but taking temperatures, uh we we definitely will have to take temperatures. Uh everybody, every day before they're entering the building, um. To ensure that, you know, if someone has a fever that we we're asked, going to require them to go home. One of the questions came up, well, if you require them to go home, would that be a, would that be classified as a sick day for that employee? These are, these are things that we have to take into consideration and get guidance from ours, not on our board attorney. But also listen to what the M D E is stating um for us. And all of those things, be- be- before we present them, we just wanna make sure that they're as accurate as possible. And and as uh transparent as we can be, or clear with the information. Um and the last one, uh and several rules about cleaning and disinfecting throughout the day and hand washing frequently. And so for the, some of the um positions that we have. Um we're going to repurpose a lot of of the positions. um, we're going to repurpose a lot of, um, the positions, um, to ensure that we have helpful staff in places to make sure a lot of the, these requirements are being followed. Because we definitely don't want to jeopardize the health of our staff, students, or anyone visiting the building. But we also want to, um, stay in compliance of Mr. Johnson.
Can I ask one question, Dr. Brown?
Yes ma'am.
All right, just like you seemed like it was an option where it says, if possible, daily health and temperature check. But when we go back up here to the school buses, it don't seem like there's an option to me. Where it says, this is no school buses, one child per seat, skip and roll. That doesn't appear to be an option to me.
And so, you're right, and those are the things, like, we, we are really looking at, um, everything that's sent out. And before we produce anything, one, we'll bring it to the board and, but we'll also allow the attorney to look over. We just don't want to miss anything, um, and just continue to listen to the information that's being put out as well as waiting for MDE to send us, uh, more guidance on these, these issues or concerns.
And, and, and with this, the MDE is working on state guidance for, for our particular state. As some other states have released it, so these are the federal mandates, of course, the states can be stricter. It just depend on what they release, but we are basically starting to work on plans based on the guidance that we have before us right now. And of course, we'll make adjustments as MDE releases their guidance. But, but basically what we're doing is looking at some of the spacing we have right now that we know in schools for the number of classrooms, the dis, the number of students, being able to space those six feet apart. As well as trying to ensure that we haven't had those partitions to be able to place in those restrooms. Because we know those are not six feet apart and possibly getting something in place for the receptionists and office staff for those that will be dealing directly with the public. But of course, what we know, these would take funding for this to ha- occur. And the CARES Act should take care of some of it, but we're kind of waiting on guidance. And Ms. Washington probably can give some more information on when we will be able to spend that money to go ahead and start some of these projects. If not, we may, we'll be taking on some, some things on the district side that we want, not want to be certain sure if we'll be reimbursed for in the future. So I know as soon as we get a little more guidance on funding and spending, we'll go ahead and start to get some of these things going. But the things that we can do physically on our own that doesn't cause purchasing, we, we, that doesn't cause a large purchasing, purchase, we'll go ahead and, and taking care of those. We're ordering masks, we're ordering hand sanitizers. We will, uh, have sanitized, hand sanitizer dispensers in each classrooms. We have placed that order. We're looking at some of the other things that we can just go ahead and take care of now on the front end. So once June and July come, it's just us getting those things in place prior to August. But of course, everything is new and, and we're kind of taking it one step at a time. And once something new is presented, we'll make sure that we can adjust to that. I think one, our, our biggest focus right now is making sure the cleaning and disinfecting can happen as they're prescribed in here. Because some of the things that we're looking at right now is the removal of carpet from classroom in school. So we're trying to make sure we get that done in the month of June and July. Because of some of the requirements that you would have to do when we talk about the disinfecting of carpets versus it's easier to clean tile floors. So we're trying to make sure we get those things taken care of on the front end. But if y'all have, go ahead. Go ahead.
I apologize for the cut off. I do, uh, as we give the new CDC guidelines to our open school, it takes me back to the virtual classroom, and I'm pretty sure the virtual classroom option will be more cost effective, even with us exceeding the, uh, the parent's, uh, funding. But I do have, uh, some concerns. I do know working parents have been concerned about, uh, academic day schedules for the virtual classroom. I was thinking maybe we should think about going, doing like a half and half for an academic day. I'm not really concerned how you all want to move, but I do know that the virtual classroom option would probably be more cost effective if you do maybe a half and half. Uh, I know parents have kind of talked about if we go to a virtual classroom, utilize the campus. Our students may not, that to me, that would look like a home to them for the most part. And I do know that, uh, parents may not be able to be, uh, to make able to assist their children because they have to work. And then they often find about the students going into the classroom. Even with the new CDC guidelines, we still just cannot be very certain. So can we look at an option where that could be, uh, pretty cost efficient? And that would include both possibly drinking water and burgers?
Of course, I don't have any issue with that. I think that'd be worked out between Dr. Brown, Dr. Pulli and the board on, I guess, the final direction that the district choose to go.
So Dr. Moore, that, that, what, what you stated is actually, um, some of the conversations that we have been having. Um, it, 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 it kind of goes back to, even if, you know, during the half and half, we, we talked about half and half days, the busing would be an issue. We, we're still just trying to figure out how that would, would work. But we do know that, um, we, we are keeping our, especially our younger kids in mind when we talk about, um, the, um, for a lot of, well, for many of our younger kids. Well, I know for, for when my children were younger, my older son had some of that responsibility of watching the younger son. And so I'm, I'm sure in, in some households, that's the case. And so when we think about our young kids, we, we definitely need them in school as much as we can. And if, if it's half and half, it would, we, we're just trying to figure out how to do that without putting our babies, our younger babies, you know, on the bus and sending them home. And if we're bringing our, our older kids to school, then who's there to watch our kids? And so we're definitely looking at, we, we are, we are looking at this from all aspects. But I do appreciate that, um, hearing the, the concerns from the parents because those are some of the very same things that we, we've been discussing. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Also, Dr. Brown, if I may add, um, what we've also been, uh, planning as well, Dr. Moore, is that, um, we won't just utilize, we don't want to just utilize Canvas, uh, to just upload a sign. You know, we, we're, we're, um, putting some things in place and setting some protocols to where we are, uh, utilizing, we want to utilize those videos, uh, where teachers have to, uh, 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 video themselves, providing the, uh, um, demonstrations for students, providing that direct instruction for students. Now, it may not be on an everyday basis, but setting some parameters, two or three times a week or something like that. We don't want to get, we want to utilize our learning management system a little bit different from what, what we did from March up until May. So that our students can have, even if they're not physically there, that they can have some direct, um, uh, well, more direct instruction from the actual teacher rather than just a, um, teacher's uploaded sign and student's a little sign.
I got that, but I think my concern was that particular platform, looking if our students are home using Canvas, our parents are working. And the children may not have assistance from their parents to complete those Canvas assignments. But I love the idea, uh, I think looking, you know, look at it a little bit more. But I think that was basically my concern with the Canvas learning platform. Is that our parents will be working and our children will be at home if that's a decision. And how will they be able to get assistance from their parents with assignments from their teachers?
Yes ma'am, and we may have to provide some, uh, some parent, uh, training on it. Uh, so that possibly, you know, um, they can, even if they are away, if, if your parents understand how to use it, then maybe they can show students, even when they're not there, and their students will know how to operate it. I just noted that, uh, on, on, i- in my notes, because I do recognize what you're saying. As a young student, a young student may not know how to, uh, navigate the, the, the program as well. So we're working on, uh, providing, how can we provide training for staff? And then how can we provide training for students that, uh, using student-friendly terms? So that they all understand, so that all students understand how to access it. So yes ma'am, point, that point is well, very well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So next we have, uh, budget preparation meeting. On Monday, um, the other superintendents, myself, Ms. Washington and the, um, financial advisor, we, we met during a Zoom meeting to discuss some of the, the needs and, um, some of our, provide the, some of the, uh, some of our thinking regarding budget preparation before it comes to the board. And, um, we discussed where, where the, where the, um, financial advisor and Ms. Washington were regarding budget preparation and things that they, they, they've been working on. Uh, Tuesday, Dr. Pulli, um, Ms. Coleman, Mr. Johnson and I met Tuesday and Wednesday to just talk about, prioritize some of the needs in the district. And, and keep in mind that there are some things that, well, there are a lot of things that we have to do differently, um, in our schools as a result of what we are, we're facing now. And so we had scheduled a, uh, meeting on Thursday with Mrs. Washington and Ms. Jones, uh, the financial advisor to, to share some of those, um, some of that information with them to help as we, uh, go into bu- uh, budget preparation. I also spoke with our, uh, board president and, um, initially, Ms. Jones was to, was, Ms. Jones and Ms. Washington were scheduled to provide the board with an update on the twenty eighth, however, we have graduation that day. So Ms. Milton said that it is fine for her to provide the board with updates on our, in our next regular board meeting. But some of the things we, we discussed with Mrs. Washington and Ms. Jones were, dealt with academics and instruction and what that would look like and how we want to try to use as, as, as much, uh, grant, grant funds. We're trying to use less district money than, um, has been used in the past to take care of some of the expenses. Uh, we do, we are receiving a K through three literacy grant for resources. Uh, we do have our title funds. Ms. Coleman, um, talked about the services being provided to our special, um, population, our special education students. Um, and Mr. Johnson, in, he, and under his area is basically where the bulk of the, the, um, monies, uh, or for things that we need, we, we were wanting to allocate. However, a lot of, some of the, well, many of the, the items under Mr. Johnson's umbrella, we, we're hoping that the CARES, um, Act money will take care of, um, some, some of those or many of those. But I asked Ms. Washington to just provide you with, you know, where we are right now. But on the regular, during the regular board meeting, Ms. Washington and Ms. Jones will be here to provide the board with an update regarding budget preparation and then meet with, with you all. So Ms. Washington?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Okay, um, like Dr. Brown has already, uh, stated, we have actually been meeting, um, with administrative staff. We've also met the chiefs, uh, earlier before this, before the, we got more data on what that pandemic, uh, actually is going to affect as far as what next year looks like. Uh, we still waiting on some guidance from MDE that will tell us exactly how much monies we have and how we can spend those funds. And again, we are, and just picking back, back off of what, um, Dr. Brown has already stated, that we're going to try to fully utilize all of the CARES money first before we have to start using district money. But for the time being, things have to happen before that hap- uh, before they release those funds or give us more guidance on it. So we're going to have to go ahead and start utilizing some of the district money in order to make sure that we're prepared before, uh, the upcoming school year. So again, it's, 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 uh, a challenge. Uh, we don't know what MAEP looks like. Uh, like you said, the, the state met yesterday, uh, but they have not given us any guidance just yet on what our money would look like. Um, and then we have to address the issue of a new school. And although it's only sixth grade, uh, we were just, uh, me and Ms. Jones were looking at the possibility of losing, uh, a substantial amount of money for that school. So again, we are still trying to see what the new normal looks like. And, um, and right now, I, I can tell you, uh, financially, it, it looks scary. So just brace yourselves, uh, know that we're going to try to keep this budget at least to what it was last year. We're going to make some modifications to it. Uh, I think right now, uh, basically we have almost a fifty million dollar budget that we're working. Uh, uh, we still have a nice fund balance that's going to probably take care of us. Uh, as long as we, uh, like I said, we have other grants and CARES Act monies that we can try to utilize first. Now that is all I have at this time. We, like I said, we will have more for the June second board meeting. If you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So next we have online registration information from Mr. Johnson.
We started online registration on yesterday. We did provide this information. This information can be found on our district webpage as well as it has been posted to our Facebook account. Think it's similar to the information that you received earlier. It just kind of gives the parents, uh, idea of if they did not currently have an active parent account, how to set up an active parent account. Because you would have to have an active parent account in order to complete online registration. And even with that, they were required to have an activation code that they would contact their current schools to receive the activation code to start the registration process. And then beyond that, those next pages kind of walk you through the process. We did post that document as well as a video that went through, uh, guided simulation of completing the online registration. Any questions or concerns that you, y'all may have at this time?
Next we have some, just some information regarding our graduation ceremony. Um, the graduation planning committee, uh, we went out to the, the civic center where we met. And then we went out to the civic center to look at our Plan A and Plan B, um, plans for graduation in the event that there's rain or no rain. And, um, then we met, that, met again and Mr. Johnson and the, um, safety team and the decorating committee, we will go back out Monday for any board members who would, would like to go out. I think it's five thirty, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Five thirty at the civic center, um, as we move forward in our plans. But I just wanted to go, go through just, um, information again for, um, clarity purposes. The Floor County Civic Center, all three graduations will be held there. May twenty sixth, which is Tuesday for Floor County High School. May twenty seventh for Amanda Elde High and May twenty eighth for Greenwood High School. At this time, to my knowledge, the students have picked up cap, cap and gowns. And if there are any students who haven't, then they, they, they know to contact their principals and counselors. All cars will have decals and, and students, for, once they pick up the cap and gown, I, I know for Elde, receive their decal so that they will know where they are in lineup. And I'm sure that's at, um, And I'm sure that's at, um, all schools. The nursing staff will be present. Initially, we said that we were going to take the temperatures of the graduates only. However, after speaking to the experts in the field, those are nurses, uh, we decided to, um, take temperatures of everyone in the car. And if, and we're asking that if anyone in your vehicle has a, a temp or a sick, we're asking you to just ask them to please remain at home because we have other avenues for them to, um, see the graduation. Um, our safety and security team will be there, diplomas. Um, board members, you have in your pack just a sample of the diploma to show with the, uh, we, we just want to verify the, the signature. So you do have a copy of that. Um, diploma programs have been created, um, for all three schools. They, um, will be printed and available. I think Dr. Pullley will give each student three programs.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Each student will receive three programs. And, um, and they're also received keepsake from the, the district. The M D E also sent out some guidance regarding, um, that was developed in collaboration with the state health officers regarding graduation ceremony. And, um, it states school districts are urged to be thoughtful and careful in choosing and planning the best way to celebrate graduation and other milestones, and this was as of May twenty fourth. Several options are available and can be successfully implemented while keeping safe practices. For drive-through graduation, the, the first option they, they gave was students and their families drive up to the school or wherever location wearing masks. Only the student gets out of the car to receive a diploma. The principal says the student's name on the loudspeaker. A photo or video is taken of the student by school staff and the family drives away. Now that is the, the option that we are using, that we, we've been planning, um, to use. Um, the second option for drive-through graduation, all family members stay in the car. The senior is in the front seat and the principal passes the diploma through the car window and shares congratulations. Everyone wears masks. The student is photographed by the school staff in a separate location. We're going to go with option one so that we will allow our, our students the opportunity to get out, take pictures, walk across the stage, um, for our graduation. Also, and, and board members, our email, you, um, a document, uh, regarding, um, the board and the administrators during graduation after we get off this, this call. Um, the graduation will begin at nine thirty A M. All cars are asked to be there by eight. Um, again, for those students, if you know of any students, uh, student who is having difficulty securing a vehicle, uh, we've asked that they provide notification to their principal five days prior to graduation, but it's still not too late if you have any, um, student who is having difficulty securing a vehicle. Um, I had a, a, a couple of questions about vehicles and how many people can be in a vehicle. Uh, what we're saying is as long as it's safe and you're legal. So if you have a, um, I'm gonna say a seven passenger S U V, there's seven seatbelts, that's safe and that's legal. We want you to keep in mind that our safety and security officers are there. And, uh, we, we're hoping that, um, if you haven't talked to Mr. Anwar Brown, to call him to make sure before you come with a vehicle that is, um, not allowed, but also just to talk about the number of people in your vehicle and their vehicle size. So for those who, who may still have questions, contact Mr. Anwar Brown, uh, regarding that. Um, and we're just asking that everyone follow the directives of the school resource officers. We, we are wanting to be as safe as we can. We want our, our students and our families to enter and exit the premises as safe as possible. Uh, district nurses, as I stated, will check temperatures of all individuals in the vehicle. And for those who may, um, have a temperature, we, we're going to ask that you, um, leave the premises. And that's the entire car. I know that's, that's harsh, but we don't want anyone else to, uh, be exposed to the virus. Um, our individual guests are required to wear, wear masks. And for any graduate, if you have issues, if you know of any graduate who cannot locate a mask or gloves, then, um, let, let your principal know or contact your principal. However, we will have, uh, masks and gloves for those students who show up and, and don't have them. Again, there will be, uh, a person taking pictures for the district and there will also be two people, uh, recording, uh, for this ceremony. Well, um, to expedite the graduation process, we are asking that, again, that graduates sit on the passenger side of the vehicle. And, um, for those who are still unclear about the information, we're going to provide instructions the day of. And, and you, you can ask as many questions as you need before we begin. Um, graduates, again, will receive diplomas, the keepsake, and three graduation programs per student. Live streaming will be, uh, you can access live streaming on the G L C S D, a website. Uh, Mr. Johnson will send a link to all seniors. You can access it also if you're on our Facebook page. You'll be able to see the, um, graduation streamed on the Facebook page. Um, scholarships and awards will be called as, as the normal graduations are. We're, we're still going to call out the scholarships and awards for students. And, uh, lastly, we're just, we're asking for total compliance so that we can make this a, a, a special time or a great event for our students. So does, does anyone have any questions? Is it something that I missed?
Uh, Dr. Brown, I have one question. And you may have touched on it, I missed, uh, one in one ear and not the other. Um, have we had an opportunity to reach out to Greenwood Police and the Sheriff Department about assistance?
That's, that's been taken care of, uh, by the safety, uh,
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have plenty of, of officers or to just ensure safety. We, we just want to make sure everybody's safe and, uh, yes.
Thank you.
Also, Dr. Brown, can you give a date for the board to be able to pick up their regalia?
Yes, uh, I, I see some up here now. Um, and I think Ms. Flowers or Mr. Howard is going to reach out as to when you are, if you, you want somebody to meet you somewhere to get it or, or how. I see some here now. And I, I send that once we hang up to just let you know.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so that, that was our, the update for graduation. And again, I know on behalf of the board, the, um, um, central office and in high district, we, we, as always, congratulate our seniors. Next we have a review of the agenda for the board meeting.
Dr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, uh, listen to the board, just so that we won't be long that day, would it be all right if, um, and this is just me throwing it out, if any board member has anything you, you, you could think of, you could say that as well? Uh, Ms. Lewis, her sons are graduating from Elsie, so can she just make a speak, a, a one, two-minute, uh, speech on behalf of the bo- board? And maybe Dr. Bailey for LaFlore High, that's his, uh, that's his ward. And either, uh, Dr. Moore, I, Greenwood High, and that way every one of us won't have to say anything.
Okay, I, I'm gonna send that in an email when we get off. It's actually, we have something set up for that process. For all board members, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So next we have a review of the agenda for the regular board meeting of Tuesday, June second, twenty twenty. Uh, first is call to order, uh, uh, two, approval of the agenda. Three, superintendent's report, and then you'll have your school at risk reports, your additional targeted support and interventions report for East and LaFlore County Elementary. Um, number four, regular agenda, the approval of the twenty twenty, twenty-one regular school board meetings. And Ms. Flowers will, will email you a copy of that, the calendar. And the one thing that, uh, we put a note in there is about election day. And so we have a question there so that once you, you're, you'll have time to review that. Um, because our board meeting actually falls on election day. So in, when she, um, sends you that, those calendars, then you'll see that question on there. We, we'll take it out, but that, there's a question for you. Um, we also have approval of requests for transfers for employees' children for the twenty twenty-one school year. Approval of a student transfer. Um, approval of the prom book insurance fee donation from M V S U. Approval of the learning management system, Canvas. Mr. Johnson will talk to you about the sixteen section land interest fund if you want to make some comments about that now, Mr. Johnson, or?
Yeah, I, I can kind of give you just some feedback on it. Uh, as, as some of you know, I think all of you, we had some issues with flooding down in the basement. And that has caused some things, some issues and some con- concerns that we have up here that has to be addressed. And speaking with Ms. Washington and speaking with the financial advisors, is some things that we have to do right now to prepare for the actual fixing of it, which would come out of next year's budget, which would take place in July. But we do have some concerns where we have to get some people in downstairs to kind of pull out and, and get rid of some things. And we have another area that we have to move the stuff downstairs too. And so with that said, the funds that are needed, she said that would qualify and we could use sixteen section interest to take care of that issue right now. Because it's, it's an emergency issue at this point.
Dr. Brown, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in regards to the sixteen section land, um, do you know if Ms. Washington was able to gather the information that was requested of, um, usage of that money?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Okay, you may have that available, Ms. Washington?
I, I do. Uh, the board had approved for us to use the sixteen section, um, money for the purchase of copiers for the district and also to purchase vehicles. The vehicles have not been purchased yet, uh, because we're waiting on, uh, some other grant funds to help, uh, to help with the cost. But we have purchased a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars plus on, uh, computer copiers for the, uh, district.
Okay, so now when it comes to sixteen section lands, are we utilizing monies that we already have before we actually go into the sixteen section funds or just how does that work?
Well, every year, uh, we receive monies from, uh, people who have, uh, lea- mineral leases, uh, uh, they have, uh, agricultural leases. And so that money is just sitting in that account growing interest. Uh, the state allows us to use those funds as the board sees, uh, deemed necessary in order to take care of school business. Uh, there is no strictness on the regular sixteen section interest fund. It's only the principal fund where you have to get approved through the state to use those funds.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so what you're saying is we don't have any other funds that could be utilized besides that interest?
Well, we have, we have money in our district. But for one-time purposes, I always would recommend that the board utilize those funds in times of, uh, what we call, you know, expenses that are not normal.
Okay, thank you.
Next we have, um, on the agenda is the approval to submit the twenty twenty-one, um, federal programs application. And then we'll have the claims docket and financial information. We also have our consent agenda, which will include the minutes of the regular board meeting of Tuesday, May fifth, twenty twenty, the minutes of the special call board meeting of Friday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty. And then we have our personnel recommendations. Um, and you have those here. One thing I, 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 and I will speak with the, the board president, um, a poss- for a possible, we're, we're looking at the, our classified employees. And, um, as I stated earlier, you know, we, we have to be strategic in how we place individuals. So they're, they're not included here, but I will be asking our board president for a possible, um, special call meeting to approve classified before the, the end of the month of June. And Ms. Milton, that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, does anybody else have anything yet? If not, y'all have to do that.
Yes, ma'am.